2016 Special Town Meeting, I'm Dan Evans, your town moderator. The Tellers have informed me that a quorum is present, so the meeting will please come to order. The return of the warrant by the town constable shows that the warrant was properly served, so the meeting is properly constituted. We'll begin our meeting, as we do every session, with a pledge of allegiance, so please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Before we can begin the formal business, let me quickly introduce to you some of the people up at the front of the room. On my left, your right, we have our Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kevin McCarthy, Chairman, Paul Schubert, Vice Chairman, Steve Garmar, Jack Canily, and Diane Kennedy. We have our Town Manager, Chris Senior, and our Town Council, Mr. Paul Durensis. Directly behind me, we have our Advisory Board, Nan Roth, Chairman, Tanya Bodell, Paul Carlson, George Chamberyard, John Chapman, Rick Fitzpatrick, Lee Jenkins, Helene Leib, and Linda Mooney. To my right, your left, we have our Town Clerk, Carol Seapare, and our Assistant Town Clerk, Beth Anderson. And lastly, behind the Advisory Board, we have Tellers, who will assist us in a hand count, Phil Fagner and Susan Hobson. Our guest policy is that participants or spectators at the meeting who are not registered voters in the town have been given name tags signifying that they're not registered, and generally, they've been asked to seat here on the side where it says "The Non-Voting Section." Town employees are permitted to sit in the body of the room. If there's a hand count, we'll ask them to move to the non-voting section. The business tonight proceeds dealing with the articles in the warrant. What we will do is, in each case, we will entertain a motion which reflects the particular matter, a particular action, that the meeting proposes to take. Each of you should have the stapled papers, I think there's six pages in total, titled "Proposed Town Manager's Motions." The warrant that you received in the mail that's bound indicates the subject matter of each of the items to be considered. The motions are the actual text of the language that we will be discussing tonight and the action that is proposed to be taken. The process that we'll follow on each, to avoid the time used in reading the motion, is as we get to an article, I'll ask for a motion in the form distributed to the meeting. And then when somebody says "moved," that means that the motion that's been made is the one printed in this pamphlet. And then we'll proceed to discuss from there, and if people want to make amendments, that can be done. But the motion that's printed will be the motion that we start discussion with. We'll count votes by voice unless I'm uncertain, or unless seven voters indicate that they doubt my count, which is fine. If seven voters doubt my count by standing, then we'll do a hand ballot, the Tellers will stake their stations, and you'll vote by holding these red slips of paper up in the air. If you would like to speak on a motion, please move to a microphone to be recognized. Once recognized, please begin by giving your name and street address. Please keep debate concise and to the point. All debate must be courteous and respectful, and remind everybody that brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. Generally, it should not be necessary to refer to specific individuals involved in the debate. If you must refer to a specific individual in order to make your point clearly, please do so with the utmost respect. And as I've said in the past, if you believe it will be necessary to speak for more than five minutes, please let me know in advance. If at any point you have a question about the procedure or the conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized, let me know that you have a point of order, and then state your question or concern. Lastly, one of the procedural motions that is sometimes made is a motion for the previous question. If one of the voters in the room believes that the meeting's understanding of the issue would not be improved by further debate, the voter can move the question. It immediately stops debate and brings a motion to stop debate, and then, if that motion is successful, proceed to a vote on the main motion. Moving the question does require two-thirds vote to pass, so in order to stop debate. And it may only be made after both sides have had a fair opportunity to be heard. And if I've already recognized a voter standing waiting to be heard, meaning to speak, I may let that voter or voter speak before proceeding to the motion to move the question. Use the address timing, we should have no trouble getting through the meeting tonight, knock on wood. So with that, if there are no questions on procedure, we'll jump right into the business. The first article is Reports of Committees. I understand that we don't have any committees with formal reports, so contrary to the motion in your pamphlet, I would suggest that we have a motion for indefinite postponement. May I have that motion? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Yes. Yeah, no, I'm going to recognize you, sorry, I just wanted to get the motion on the floor. The 25th Anniversary Committee would like to make a brief statement of introduction. So let me call on them, and then we'll vote on the motion. As I understand it, they don't wait to make a formal report.
I'm Joy Schiffman, Cohasset resident and Chairperson for the Cohasset 250th Celebration scheduled for the year 2020. At the annual town meeting in the spring of 2015, the town approved an article creating a steering committee for the purpose of planning and carrying out events in relation to the Cohasset 250th Anniversary, and to take any action related thereto. Earlier this year, the Board of Selectmen appointed four initial members of the steering committee, two from the Cohasset Historical Commission, and two from the Cohasset Historical Society. The goal of the committee is to create a town-wide collaboration, drawing from businesses, cultural and civic organizations, nonprofits, schools, churches, and so on. In these early stages, we are still adding members, making sure we have the right skills and interests represented to execute such an all-encompassing project. The primary steering committee will consist of about 15 people, and after that, we'll be assembling a variety of subcommittees to handle all the various initiatives. The 250th Celebration, or CESTER Centennial, which is the actual name for our 250th Anniversary, will include events and programs throughout the year, culminating with a large event weekend sometime during the summer of 2020. Our three objectives during the year will be to commemorate the rich history of Cohasset from our founding in 1770 to now, to celebrate all of the great things that Cohasset has to offer presently, and to dedicate some kind of lasting contributions to the town and its citizens for future generations. It seems far off now, but it's a big undertaking, and we'll be calling on people from all different parts of the fabric of town to be part of our tribute to and celebration of all things Cohasset. I'll be presenting a comprehensive update at the next town meeting in the spring, but until then, if anybody has questions or would like to be involved, please contact us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After that presentation, is there any discussion? Very well, we've had a motion for indefinite postponement, it has been seconded, it requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article II, Amendments to Fiscal 2017 Operating Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, I have a motion, is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's Cyber Monday, and I appreciate everyone taking the time out, but I think there's Wi-Fi in here if you really feel the need to get some last-minute bargains. We have just a couple of amendments to the operating budget. The single biggest one, as you see, is the workers' comp insurance. That came to us after the budget was adopted in the spring, so that's the single biggest change in the budget. We just felt it would be good to make that amendment now, rather than wait till the end of the year. Thank you. I'm told the Board of Selectmen has voted by a vote of 5 to 0 to recommend adoption of this motion. The Advisory Committee has voted by a vote of 9 to 0 to recommend adoption. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Yesterby.
Martha Yesterby, 81 O. Pass Road. It's just a clarification, I see in the warrant, the main warrant, town meeting, the school support officer was $75,000, and now we have to transfer $11,500. Does that, it's just a clarification, does that mean you needed more money to hire the person?
No, actually, we need less in this line, so the money's actually moving from here to the human resources line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article II. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article III, Unpaid Bills from Previous Years. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a 90% vote for adoption, again, a 90% vote. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior. There's one little one that slipped, it was most certainly our fault, not Mr. Goodwin's fault. The products were delivered, and we'd like the authority to pay his bill. The Board of Selectmen has voted 5 to 0 in favor of this motion. The Advisory Committee has likewise voted 9 to 0 in favor of adoption. Is there discussion? Very well, proceed to a vote, does require 90% for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article III, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article IV, Stabilization Funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior. So this is actually a very exciting article. The town has been building its financial policies over the last few years, and there were some additional modifications made in the spring. And because of a good fiscal year we just closed out, the recommendations here will allow us to get to our goal, which is a 15% reserve combination balance for the first time, which will keep us, I hope, at the AAA level, which we received bond rating back in the spring. This will put us in really good standing, not just now, but going forward. And there'll also be some money coming out of capital in the future article to fund some articles, which Sam Wakeman will talk about. But this will bring the general stabilization balance of $3.3 million, and the capital at the end of the day will be at $1.2. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted 5 to 0 in favor of adoption. The Advisory Committee voted 5 to 2 in favor of adoption of the line item related to Special Education Stabilization Fund, and voted 7 to 0 on the other line items. Mr. Davis.
Tim Davis, 257 Atlantic Avenue. I am currently serving as a member of the OPEB Commission, which you, Committee, which you may recall, the Selectmen put in force about three or four years ago, to address the $40 million of unfunded OPEB liability at that time. And while the $150,000 of free cash going into the OPEB trust fund is a welcome move, at this rate, it'll be about 100 years, or more than 100 years, before we get to a funded situation. There will likely be another OPEB Committee at that time, so I will not vote on that one. But I just wanted you to be aware that that's the direction we're going.
Well, just to clarify, this is the third contribution we'll be making this year. There was one voted, there was money in the budget in the spring, and there was also an additional 225 that was allocated by town meeting. So this will bring the total in the OPEB fund to over $2 million, so we are making steps. Is there further discussion? We'll move to a voice vote on the motion under Article IV. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article V, Allocation of Funds for One-Time Costs. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, it does require a majority vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior. There are four items in here. One is for security gates in this building, and some others, which will, it's part of a package, some more will be coming in the next article, which will help, I think, we all think, improve ongoing security. A chunk for road and drainage improvements, again, another ongoing issue, we want to stay ahead of. There's money for the 250th Anniversary Committee, you heard Mrs. Schiffman speak a few minutes ago. This is kind of seed money, won't be spent immediately, but it'll be there to keep building for the big event in four years. And it's also funding in here to move the master plan to the next step, that Selectmen have appointed a master plan committee in conjunction with the planning board, and this will be available for that group to manage as we move forward. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted by a vote of 5 to 0 in favor of this motion. The Advisory Committee likewise, by a vote of 9 to 0, has voted in favor. And the planning board's vote is required on the item with related to the master plan, and the planning board voted 4 to 0 in favor of that portion of the motion. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under Article V. All those in favor of the motion under Article V, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you very much. Article VI, Capital Improvement Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. With the Capital Budget Committee, I'll recognize Mr. Sam Wakeman, Chairman.
Thank you, Dan. Normally, we do not like to deal with capital items at a special town meeting, but the items before you are necessary due to a failure of our existing phone system in the schools, which some of you may have personally experienced, which forced a replacement of that portion of the phone system, and we now need to integrate the town with the school's phone system. This will pay for a totally new phone system, technologically up-to-date for the town. The remaining items are all security issues that have been, in some form or another, on the docket for a number of years. The school committee recently completed a security audit with the help of the Cohasset Police Department, and these were recommendations that came out of that. We deemed them significantly important to bring them to the special town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen voted by a vote of 5 to 0 in favor of adoption of this motion, and the Advisory Committee likewise voted by a vote of 7 to 0 in favor of adoption. Is there discussion? Yes, Mr. Swanberg.
Rick Swanberg, 48 Nichols Road. Having installed at least three phone systems in my lifetime when I was much younger, I have a couple of questions to ask. One is, $275,000 is a lot of money. Is that for wiring, and the PBX, and everything else, just for the schools? And is this in addition to what they've already done?
I'll recognize Mr. Ron Menard, who's CIO of the town.
Would you mind repeating that question?
Yes. This seems like a lot of money. Is this for wiring, the actual PBX, and all the devices together for the schools? What's this include?
That is a complete system. It essentially puts a PBX system at the high school, which was installed due to an emergency. And we build off of that system by putting a second one at the CEA. All sites have redundancy within the switching gear, the fabric of the switches, so that in event that any particular site were to go down, they'd all have local survivability. We're going to maintain a number of centrics lines, but the majority of those will go away. We will also maintain certain analog lines to ensure we have local survivability, essentially being able to dial 911 from any site. There was a couple of sites that we looked at that definitely needed to have some additional cabling done, that wasn't too significant. This particular system allows you to run power over Ethernet, which is what this system is, on CAP 3 as opposed to CAP 5, so in some...
Those are very nice technical terms, but for the rest of us, we'd like to know survivability of what?
The ability to dial 911 if any site, primarily the two PBX systems, go down.
And did you look at outsourcing this to Verizon?
We looked at a couple of cloud-based solutions back in, I believe it was February of this year, and we believe that, based on examination of the existing ShoreTel system that we implemented at the high school, that it gave us more flexibility with our ability to manage systems and business processes, especially continuance of operation, emergency operation facility.
Okay, a lot of money.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Again, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article VI, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion does pass by the requisite two-thirds vote. Article VII, Supplemental Appropriations, Fiscal Year 17 Water Department Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require a majority vote for adoption. For the Water Commission, I'll recognize Mr. Ralph Yesterby.
Thank you. Ralph Yesterby, Chair, Water Commission. This is basically to transfer money from our retained earnings for the continued upgrades and improvements for our town water system. Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen has voted by a vote of 5 to 0 in favor of adoption. The Advisory Committee has likewise voted by a vote of 9 to 0 in favor of adoption, and the Capital Budget Committee has likewise voted by a vote of 4 to 0 in favor of adoption. Is there discussion? Very well, we'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article VII. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article VIII, Bylaw Amendment Photovoltaic Arrays. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our Fire Chief, Mr. Robert Silvio.
Good evening, everyone. This, as I see it, is a very simple item that we're trying to address. The photovoltaic regulations and the industry is changing so quickly that what we're concerned with is firefighter safety, dealing with rooftop-mounted photovoltaic arrays, excuse me. And what is happening is that not only are we looking at solar panels, but we're actually looking at solar roofs. Right now, there is Elon Musk, Tesla has designed a solar roof, which is from edge to edge, from gutter to peak. In other words, there is no space for firefighters to do what we have to do when we get up on a roof. What we expect is that the national standards will catch up to all of this eventually. That being said, NFPA 70, which is the National Electrical Code, and NFPA 1, which is, in essence, the fire code, which Massachusetts has adopted both, those things get looked at about every two to three years. So if you look at that from a cycle standpoint, we could be two years, maybe three years, behind the curve on regulations. After that happens, the Commonwealth then, of course, has to do their own hard look at these things, and that may take another six months to two years. As an example, the present NFPA 1, that was adopted by the Commonwealth on January 1 of 15, which included regulations for photovoltaic arrays on residential buildings, the portion in regards to firefighter safety was omitted, it has still not been adopted. So we're now looking at almost two years, and that has not been caught up to yet. So in other parts of the country, where they've addressed the firefighter safety issues, those have already been adopted. So all we're looking for here, very simply, is the ability for when someone goes in, and none of this is retroactive, when somebody comes in to apply for a photovoltaic array on their roof, that they will meet the current national standard. And therefore, hopefully, we will catch up on some of the things that, as I said, the Commonwealth has a tendency to be behind the curve just because of process. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen, by a vote of 5 to 0, has recommended in favor of adoption of this motion, and the Advisory Committee, by a vote of 8 to 0, has recommended in favor of adoption. Is there discussion?
Francis Collins, 404 South Main Street. Chief, what do you have on there that when you put people up on the roof, what do you have to secure that power now? That sounds like a pretty bad hazard to me with all those photocells up there.
So the problem with photocells, very simply, is as long as there's a light source, they are electrified. Even if you shut them off, well, you shut them off at a panel that is down on the ground, it does not shut off the panels. The only way to shut off a panel is to, in essence, cover it with a heavy enough tarp that it will shut the panel down. So that is one of the issues that we deal with when we have to get up on these roofs. Now, obviously, the other issue is very simply that if you go edge to edge and gutter line to roof, obviously, these are glass panels. If you, what we do, do our thing and drive anything into them, well, they are electrified, so there is an electrocution hazard the moment that you get up and start doing the type of things, activities, that firefighters are required to do.
And what sort of perimeters are we looking at, on the roofs, on the gutter side, on the rake side?
The present code would require that there be walkways up both sides, so in other words, you would come in three feet from the edge of each side, and three feet down from the peak line itself. That's enough space for firefighters to operate on a roof.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article VIII. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Article IX, Amendment to Cohasset Bylaws. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize for the Conservation Commission, Mrs. Patrice Vogelmann.
Danny, for the record, that's my mother. Hi, I'm Patrice Vogelmann, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. On the advice of Special Counsel, their recommendation is that we change our town bylaw to provide a specific dollar or amount for noncriminal disposition of enforcement. Currently, we have language that says "up to," and based on Massachusetts law, that's not acceptable. And so the recommendation is that we strengthen it by striking the "up to" and not more than language that currently exists, and instead, put in a specific amount. So we took the action of adjusting the conservation bylaw that exists in the town bylaw, and we need to bring that to town meeting for a vote. It passed by advisory, it passed by the Selectmen, and also by the vote by Conservation itself.
Thank you. As Ms. Vogelmann indicated, the Board of Selectmen recommended in favor of adoption by a vote of 5 to 0, and the Advisory Committee recommended in favor by a vote of 9 to 0. Is there discussion?
Gail Collins, 404 South Main Street. Just out of curiosity, give me an example, or give us an example of a violation.
Sure. So you take a lot of fill, and you dump it into an area that's either a resource area or a buffer zone. And then we would ask you to come in and explain why you did this, and then we would, and then you would offer to fix it, and then we would accept that. But then if you don't offer to fix it, and we continue to request you to fix it, and you don't, then we would issue an enforcement order. Noncriminal disposition means that it's a ticket, so it would go to Norfolk Superior Court as opposed to any kind of criminal court. By putting in this language into our town bylaw, it allows us... By putting in this language into our town bylaw, it allows us to recover the cost of any, um, any action that we need to pursue. So we would be able to charge people for not fixing it, um, for the time period from enforcement to whenever it's resolved by the Superior Court.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Sawchuk.
Hi, Wayne Sawchuk, 432 Beechwood Street. I have a simple question, and that is, are we doing just the wetland protection, or when it says, "move that the town of Cohasset general bylaws be amended," to make this that $300 is the minimum fine, or the fine, for any other violations with the general bylaws? Or is this written, in other words, could that be interpreted in that fashion? So if there was a $100 signed bylaw, would that now be $300 also?
The way, um, this, the way it's amended and shown here in what was passed out tonight, it applies specifically to wetlands.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article IX, again, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article IX, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, please signify by saying "nay." The motion is adopted unanimously. Um, with that, I would like to offer all of you my thanks, um, and congratulations for coming out this evening for such a smooth meeting. Um, without all of you, we wouldn't have a quorum, and we wouldn't have a meeting. I'd also like to offer my thanks to all of our elected and appointed volunteers, whose hard work in advance at this meeting make, um, accomplishing the kind of business we did tonight as easy as it was for tonight. So thanks to all of them. With that, yes. May I have a motion to dissolve? Thank you, may I have a second? For the record, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, the meeting is dissolved. Have a great night.